We headed it pretty hard.
Um, you're missing. Trying to make sure. Got your laptops. Quick, yes. Tom James. Everything I wanted to clarify, I think there are nine, nine seventy one apiece for the new ones. But he said three. To have like training.
Training plus.
In particular, I didn't know if you meant two or one for them to share.
There's a three or seven training. One of them will use that except for my data for train.
So.
Three's over and they can be all.
I think so because there's. They have two more say. And they're the ones that Rob got on the grant. I'm thinking about what yours is because we had two over there. So I think the other one was for trees. I don't know if they've decided. The desk. That's probably what it was.
I would rather do that because I think this will kind of, I'm gonna have to be.
Ready before you leave us, we gotta have your phone number.
I think that might be what we talked about because Rob basically, he just has to know where those went, but it doesn't. I told him I said, we're not putting those on the road like we bought. Even if it's like a office or a road guide. You bought these without the switch of like. Really good.
Is that something we want to do next month?
Yeah, so I think they're pretty much done. It was just what to do with them and, you know, obviously switching like you appeared to, you guys is a little more complicated than just one, but.
Well, and so I like how we did it with my door because I still got my old laptop, it still works and it makes a bit of a difference. But like if something happens, I need to see my laptop totally. I still have my old laptop.
And we have three sixty five mark senses. From me, three for each computer.
Um, we only have one or two left.
Well, but like as we already have, we now can't really remove the light sensors from those.
So we don't have to have seven or three for one log in. One, one log in, one screen. So we'll just make it generic.
Yeah, but all three of those can be, you can use the same train, one, train. All three can be the same login, everything, so no problem.
Because we added, it would take you for like forty eight.
They must probably have.
Yeah.
You've got two for meeting on the county council again. And contrast or how about me?
What did we do?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, you wanna take a minute, look at. Minutes from the last. What is it, three, four minutes, three meetings. I read them online, I didn't see anything, but if anybody has anything, I'll. I'll give you a minute to look and see. If I see an addition, your corrections. Make a motion, we reserve a matter of end.
I'll second.
Game, that's motion to approve, earning seconds and enter discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Move on. Mr. Dearby, Miss Bay.
Andy's got this one.
So we're asking for Weston Street to have a pay increase. Um, we are going to refer to a school liaison position and that is strictly grant funded. We got a grant given to us for a hundred and ten thousand dollars so we can support her pay out of that. Um, and then if possible, um, we tried to start it on the fourteenth of last month. Um, so we could retro her pay back to August the fourteenth. We have a copy of the grant, if you guys want, how's the grant deal?
Grant funded for a hundred and ten thousand. Two year grant, so we received the first hundred and ten, we got another hundred and ten.
Are you wanting to just give her a pay increase or?
Make her full time.
They're wanting to add a.
It is. Yeah, I'm sorry, I answered.
Oh, that is full time.
I'd say full time positions. Um, it is grant funded, so it will be conditional on.
So it'll be permanently grant funded or just temporarily?
Benefits.
The position will be there as long as the grant is there.
Okay, that's my next question.
It is, yeah.
How is that beneficial coming out there?
Never.
Correct. Everything.
So are you gonna run the hundred and ten thousand back then and spend it as you need it? That's correct. Yes. We made grant deliverables, which we already met first year, money's just ours. Okay, it's to be spent as we see, however, hiring this is one of the requirements of the grant. Yeah, I was gonna say goodbye. Good luck scanning that.
Anybody have any questions here concerned?
Hopefully no, it's grant funded.
Insert trains or that's gone.
Yeah, it's not in our budget at all, I mean, it won't be a part of our budget unless something changes somewhere down the line, because it's not in the next year's.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Salute.
Bill makes a motion, be in seconds, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you all very much.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Fugel.
Number one. Alright, I just wanted to take a quick second to cover the day, I know we had a lot of discussions about building positions and I have Nora Brons with me this morning. She is our new four age educator, so I just wanted to take a quick minute to kind of come and give her an opportunity to address the council if she wishes or answer questions. If that's my habit, just to give you guys a little insight of who our new educator is.
Hi, good morning.
Nora Brons.
If you don't know me, I'm Nora Brons, so I am a lifelong resident of this county, so born and raised here. And so I went to Hannover College and I obtained my degree in environmental biology and secondary education. So I've actually spent the past five years teaching at Batesville Middle School, so I taught eighth grade science and biology. So I'm really excited to be back working within my own county, back with my own people here. Um, I'm definitely looking forward to getting into the schools. Um, I've already sent out some emails and started those connections, it's a really important partnership. On top of it, it's a place that's kind of close to my heart, so that's what I did. And along with that, I do have that science background, so I also will be pushing kind of that STEM, um, which is a big part of Purdue's kind of force right now. So that's something I'm excited to kind of get into connection with, with the schools and start building those community partnerships in those aspects.
Welcome.
Yes, glad to see you.
Thank you.
All of us. Believe me. Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Be a pleasure working with you. Anybody else have anything during our regular meeting? Now we'll go on to condition or correct or transfers and additions. This is a business meeting. Okay, let's go to the, uh, transfers. Everybody has a copy of them? We gonna make, yeah, we make two prisoners meals. Without an additional this year?
Yep. No, that'll be coming up later this year. That'll be coming up later this year.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Bill makes a motion to approve the, or the transfers.
I'll second.
Ashley second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Additional. Think they're just ARP? Correct?
Yep.
Call it app two. Okay, we got one here for Westport Area Business Association, two hundred and fifty thousand for the ARP fund. Uh, this is to appropriate American Recovery Plan money on guidelines, I don't know what you're gonna use it for, but.
For light removal to update, um, bad, bad properties for lack of a better term. And get them more usable for the community.
It's for two hundred and fifty thousand. Any questions? I don't have answers, Dan, Mike, and Kenny, Ernie, Kenny. Intertain a motion to approve. Ashley makes a motion to approve. Not only seconds, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have a note on here, ARP for a hundred thousand for the inclusion part. I do know a little bit about that, but.
How much they spend in total on that, Danny?
I think it's close to half million dollars, uh, I think it's maybe one and seven fifty.
Some frogs actually.
Eight hundred thousand. I saw him on the, actually, I sit on that committee. And I think the total when we started was like seven fifty or something like that. And so most of it is funded through donations as well. It matches your grants, um, so.
So it is giving you a hundred thousand too, isn't it?
I'd say it really so.
I think that pretty much gets you.
Close enough.
Yeah.
And there was some ready funding that was given to that project as well, as I sit on the ready board. And I will tell you, from a state perspective, they're using this as a model around the states and, and really kind of touting what a great project is all over the state.
I do know that you appropriated a hundred thousand.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a lot of work.
I don't think they started them, I think it's gonna start.
If order the equipment, I'd add.
Yeah, so it was a kind of a long-term project, we were looking at maybe three or four years. And so that year we hit pretty much all of our goals, so we're gonna go forward way before, so. I don't know, the biggest thing that we're looking at now, I think Brenda's doing a great job, kind of leading the way is making sure that I have a material as far as mine. That's was a big piece at one point where there was some material, obviously with supply and change. So we're just making sure that everything's there, so I don't know, once construction starts, how long that project will take, but I just know we're ahead, way ahead of schedule. Is it, is it bid out or is it a local company doing it or what?
So they're working with a company and I forget the name of it, but that is what they do, is they facilitate very simply building.
Miracle Recreation.
What is it?
Miracle Recreation.
Yeah, Miracle Recreation, so.
Good thing I like about it too, and he's bringing it's gonna keep a, Brendan's gonna keep an account to keep the equipment updated and keep it without turning it over to the parks.
That will be greatly appreciated.
Some of the stuff we build, we just slam two maintenance, and he said he's gonna try to keep the front going, keep the maintenance and everything else going. That's the thing I liked about it. You guys have any questions?
For how much?
Hundred thousand to the inclusion part.
Any other motion to approve?
Ashley makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Kenny seconds it, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Increase mileage and allowance rate. Where we at now, Jan?
Right now, uh, we're currently at forty five cents while.
Forty five cents.
And that's been in place.
What does the state or federal do?
Federal is sixty two point five and that's through the state is twenty nine point seven.
State's how much?
Forty nine point, and I don't have it right in front of me.
Where should we be?
How much local, oh, I mean, it's on the, it's just the, um, first, I looked at emails, they weren't going with what the state, the state's set. But stuff on doing a little bit less.
Okay, we're at forty five?
If in that sense, the forty off came up, but this was able to keep having fees, so I know.
Wow.
Yeah.
You're taking fifty?
I'm, I'm thinking fifty or fifty five, somewhere in there. It kind of splits the difference between the state and the federal, but whatever you guys think. It's forty five now. You're fifty five. Do what, Kenny?
I'm good. Fifty five.
And Ernie? Need a motion?
Definitely, yes.
Do what?
Need a motion. I'll make a motion that we up the mileage reverse on fifty five cents.
Andy makes a motion.
I'll second that.
Bill seconds it, any other discussion on mileage? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kenny?
Jan, is that the first year you're gonna change that?
How are we on mileage budget?
Well, I think on each, each budget, if you wanna set it, in fact, they've set, um, October first. As of today, that, that's your goal, yeah.
Mark, these are just to set for January one.
I think we go to January one right now. Okay, is that all we have? Anybody else have anything for the business meeting? Okay, we need a motion to adjourn the business meeting.
No, this is all.
Just one, okay. Okay, twenty twenty three budget public hearing, about fifteen minutes ahead of schedule. Anyone have questions, concerns? Anything to bring up about that budget?
You already know mine.
I have anything? I think it was turned in, turned in on Gateway. This is a public hearing, you approve next month. Okay. We have to follow matter of interest. Pardon? No, this public hearing, if anybody has any questions or concern? Don't approve it next month.
I think you need to wait until nine thirty to assess and sanitize.
Okay, we can.
I should live.
You guys wanna provide some entertainment?
Oh, come on, Mr. Sanders. No, old thing man is.
Hey, Josh, I do want to invite you to the next one, please. Well, I see your face. Ten thirty, October fifteenth.
Yeah.
Also, I think the whole thing is just. I just want you, okay.
Yeah. What is it? Second one. I'd say.
Thirty seven.
Found it.
Yeah, I don't know either. I'm guessing the main thing for pirate dinner on Monday night.
They wait on that. I said, why are you?
Yeah, I pretty.
How do you know?
My blog is pretty, there's that blog somewhere.
Oh, wow. She can't sleep on. It looks like the whole one is a little more. Looks like.
There's proof.
I like the system.
Well, it's, when I get my computer. I think we have not seen first server because of the. Rather than trying to go over and knock on other computers with.
What I would, what I recommend is was to put up their server. Is we can still use the exact.
We'll be replaced with.
If we add it as a fashion, it's really different than they were in the first green, you actually. You don't know which camera on there be, if you next three of all, I mean, I guess you're even click on a. When it's one. So you can add one of the year. For you to collect this. You sell, if you have a different. To try and train. Fight to lose weight or resources to that rather probably, it causes problems. So I've been really trying to. Everybody was trying to sanitize. There is one that reason. Was that worth it?
Well, it's all a paper. It's what we use.
Right.
So we want to stay consistent.
I'll save you an extra dog. See, that's all we're.
We look at a company. Wrong, would have my whole mother ball been also, the mics. And one day like that, when you license it's quiet and it still works. You still get the update. This place, everything was done in the cloud, so you.
Yeah.
And I didn't.
Yeah, I mean, we're at a point too where like, if your licenses come out, you're on the system as well as your work as far as the years. It wouldn't be a bad time to move. As given, certainly to whatever it is, because David's a big fan of, um, milestone. And what's nice about it is you can do, um, a local, in VR, local server, whatever you want at each site.
I mean, that'll work out.
That to one server that we can run in our cloud for login and permissions and for streaming, so you can still connect to one. But it's, it's different in fact. Especially when you're recording local, you see that burnout, it makes it to one, it's like a high quality footage back. It's only if you're watching camera.
Camera then that's streaming.
But all the recording happens there. The reason I liked it at state was they needed to be able to pull everything else in there. They couldn't record on the monitor. So we see, you know, with the canal, just call it a state, they can ship all that back to one place. They can DVR to all those rotations that all tied back. So it's really nice, not price. Too. So, you know, that's. That's a great sale.
We signed a service being updated CI for two years, and that included, um, yup, they've already upgraded our exact vision, so our licenses currently. Because of that, I mean, otherwise we would work on it. Acquire license. I know longer, but that little box is up in the car.
I saw it, yeah, it might have, it might not. So that pops up because I, it's being, it's really the whole name, I know, somebody.
Yeah, no, that, we're, we're, mine never comes up with that, so maybe it's forced you in place to do it, we never decide.
When the last time I talked, that was my question, you know. It's, uh, they were. Maybe it's with them.
And I actually got the measures to. Little supplies. We don't need to throw up. We're learning the system. The worst thing is the. Really, with the, on the incentive here, it gets filled up. And I can see where it's starting really slow. About every four weeks, maybe five weeks, then I have to go reboot the system, do any repairs out there. Updates, and also things out. Luckily, what's destroying this, the, like, I just wondered about that.
Because you have an issue. And I was concerned that was a network problem between their network and ours. And it seems like unplug the. Between our networks.
I don't understand exactly, do you know, have something to do with. They increase the memory in the computer and not go out. And it's not a big deal, you know, and Windows requires you, stupid ass Windows, you have to do it anyway, so I just want to slow this down. Reboot the system.
Well, I wanted to. It's just like I'm. It's running. A lot of times it's.
Or they said they have such a trunkage. I feel like all those shockings like that, with the. I, I haven't been used to it really, because it's not really serious for me. I was gonna say sheriff went in there and put it in there and I had to walk him through the system. And of course, it is not much. Fortunately, I have got enough that I can walk him through the whole process. Yeah, well, we, we, uh, I mean, you know, I just got six thousand dollar repair on the. My source wanted to do a fair warranty, but it's my. No, you. Reboot, it just not doing a fine. But so really, it was. I got a car, I was in train, this was Saturday. It happened on, all the lights were on.
I was walking around back there, I don't know, the pictures I took of you, I was like, I was holding one phone, my phone with the light on to take a picture. It was so dark. In the room, I couldn't even dream.
Well, it was, uh, the track it down to was. HQ two, it would mean families, electrical, it did not match the break. I would say that enough of the search. I would say enough of this, it's not the main break. Oh, it can really, I'm amazed it didn't, the only reason it didn't do anything to your control is all of those runs through you from that primary individual D P S.
Biggest issue we had, I was standing there and that's right, I was already in this match. We're gonna come to that, I was standing there, I saw it, all of our. Switch didn't go down with the price of power, there's so much electromagnetic, you're gonna turn the gear, the strike, so they couldn't change the front, it was probably all water, it's just ground.
Right, changed.
Changed the map. A lot of our locals, we didn't reboot, we're not supposed to.
Well, they said, I haven't looked at it, they said, in the camera, you can see the flash and then you actually can see the pressure way it coming across and the camera trick.
We were trying to figure out, what control. We have ninety-six hours. The city. Trains were, it's like, they were calling, they were calling you on the radio, right?
That's a problem. So far, I haven't. There was a generator failure, which is. The auto starts.
Is that why it kept running?
Yes, and we manually shut it off. We walked through the whole thing, I watched him check everything. He showed me how to manually start it, we have another code, code people on it, and I showed Greg how to do it too, and he would come on, manually start it. That's the funny part of it is, is even though that lightning strike, how it starts or how hard it shows, it'll start itself. It was that other power, it was on a Monday night, the generator started, we didn't have power, it started off. So I'm like, I called Bob at the gym, said, listen, you know, even though it was in. It didn't start, but. The first time, but it did the second time.
That also could be the same kind of issue there. Electromagnetic.
Let's face it, you're better than anybody knows what it's did, who knows what these bugs get in there?
Okay, nine thirty shot on it, we made it to the public here. Now we have any, anything from the public? Anything from the elected officials? Any questions, concerns? I'll make a motion to adjourn. Kenny makes motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Kenny seconded. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kenny, well, thank you.
So David's. He is getting a quote from another company, that is, camera systems, they do add that.